Whether we're on the air or not.
Be as if we are. But we'll be as if we are. He might not be able to.
Well, we're assuming we're not, but we don't know.
No, you're not.
That's what I said. No, we're not. So instead of good evening, Washington courthouse, it'll be good evening, Kestrel Keys.
And Mr. Osborne.
And Mr. Will and everybody else. Okay, good evening, Washington courthouse. It is seven thirty P M. on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. And time for our second regular meeting of the month. At this time, Mr. Schultz will give the invocation. Mr. Hawk will lead us in the pledge.
Please stand. Lord, thank you for letting us gather here tonight. Give us the strength, the stability, the persistence, the ability to make the right decisions for the citizens and the city of Washington courthouse. Keep us all safe and in good health. Thank you for being there and thank you for listening to us and thank you for everything. And in your name, Lord, amen.
Please repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, Kelly.
Blair.
Here.
Call.
Here.
Chrisman.
Here.
Hawke.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Lynch.
Here. We have the minutes from our meeting on June eleventh, twenty twenty five. Anybody see any corrections? I didn't, but I am not a missum. Anyone want to make a motion to accept?
I'll move that we accept the minutes from the six eleven council meeting as written.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Any communication, Mr. Denny?
None.
We have a committee report, service, safety and recreation, and that will be Mr. Hawk.
The service, safety and recreation committee met in the city council chambers at one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, June eleventh, twenty twenty five at five thirty P M. Ted Hawk presided and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Jim Chrisman, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief, Mr. Tim Downing, fire chief, Mr. Jeff Fenary, police chief, Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney, and Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee benefited from a report by the police department. Chief Fenary discussed camera systems with the committee. The committee recommended that the administration proceed with the camera system installation. Number two, the committee benefited from a report by the fire department. Chief Downing noted the successful launch of the Safety Town program. Chief Downing noted that forty eight children participated in the program. Chief Downing thanked all the volunteers and sponsors of the program. Number three, the administration noted ongoing maintenance activities, including brush and tree trimming, street sweeping, grass cutting and repairing manhole covers. Number four, the committee noted that water distribution had been stalling. No, the committee noted that water distribution had been installing new services. Number five, the administration advised the committee that the chlorine room at the wastewater treatment plant had been refurbished. Number six, the administration noted that water residential samples for lead and copper would be taken. The committee noted that this was done every three years. Number seven, the administration noted that railroad railway crossing work on South North Street had begun. Number eight, the administration noted steam line issues on Market Street. The administration noted that options were being discussed regarding a possible solution. Number nine, the committee noted several recreational items being completed, in particular, painting of the shelter houses and playground equipment. Number ten, the administration advised the committee that the splash pad had been opened for the season. Respectfully submitted Ted Hawk, chairperson, service, safety and recreation, Mrs. Kelly Ford, recording secretary.
I do see a problem.
Yeah.
What? Chairperson.
I know what.
You said it right.
You said it right.
Oh.
You said it right.
You know what I used as the template for that? Recreating.
I didn't see that.
Joe, I haven't been down there lately. Is the Southmore Street Bridge stuff done?
They're looking pretty good down there. They're heading in the right direction.
It's not done yet. You don't have to make a difference. I was just wondering. It's my old neighborhood.
Hey, Gary.
That's okay. It's okay. It's okay.
I'm saying last time it's done there.
You can answer that later.
I haven't been down that way. My neighborhood.
They were only two or three days under.
Really? At South North Street, I'm rail lined.
Oh, the railroad's complete there.
So it's open.
It'll take a while to get the crossing arms put in. If you remember Court Street, the railroad was down for a while and then whenever they get ready, they come in and they put the crossing arms in, but I thought they did a really good job on the replacing the railroad. It's pretty smooth.
And and it wasn't closed very long either.
No, four days.
Three days, four days?
Yeah.
I was surprised.
Yeah.
But the the dirty move around stuff stuff's basically done.
I'm sorry.
The what I call the dirty shovel around dirt part of it, that's basically done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. All right.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Gary.
Thanks.
Anything else on Ted's report besides changing committee name? Does someone want to make a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the read and change from finance and personnel to.
Finance.
Yeah. Whoever's finance, it's safety, service and recreation. From finance, it's safety, service.
Yes.
Last step.
Thank you.
Very good. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Did you get a second?
Blair.
Yes.
She did. Okay, we're good.
Blair.
Yes.
Thank you. Call.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Mr. Denon, your report.
Thank you. We have gone from rain to hot, which has some implications that sometimes I don't think that that we really think about. It's warm enough now that you lose quite a bit of water every day from those two reservoirs simply by evaporation. Now, if you get a little bit of wind, that speeds that process process up even further. So that is something that we monitor rather closely. So as that occurs, we take water, withdraw water out of the creek and pump it up into those two reservoirs so that you have water when you get a little bit further into the year. But that is something that has been quite honestly quite noticeable since it's got hot. You've warmed up that water enough up there now that that it will lose a couple inches a day if you don't add anything to it. So that is something we'll continue to monitor. We talked about our progress in returning to normal in the land of technology. And that is a study paced forward where you'll continue to restore things to their normal operation and end the inconvenience that everybody has had to deal with. And no one will be happier with that than all folks like Ron and and so forth in the finance department as everyone starts to return to normal. Would like to thank the street department, cemetery, water, wastewater and police and fire. A lot of the work occurs outside and it hasn't been the most pleasant conditions. If you're work for the cemetery and you're outdoors the entire day and it's ninety seven degrees, it's it's toasty day. But they have done exceptional and have marshalled without any slowdown whatsoever. The O S U master gardener volunteers in the street department would like to thank them for the annual flower pot program. They have gotten to the point where they filled out a little bit. They look exceptionally nice. Would like to thank the sponsors of those flower pots because that is private individuals and businesses in the community sponsor those pots and it makes a tremendous difference in the way the community looks. And over the years, it's been a lot of fun experimenting with what works with those in terms of the soil composition and what plants work in it. And you also try to, I'll change it up a little bit from year to year so it doesn't look exactly the same, but some things work exceptionally well in those conditions and others don't. Because what we've got it down to is that those things can survive on being watered twice a week. Once a week, street department does it and then Don Kramer, God love him, doesn't trust us with the fertilizer. So Donnie supervises the watering the other day of the week with some liquid fertilizer added to the water. Would like to remind folks about the changes to the fireworks in Washington courthouse because you have the July fourth holiday coming up. And I am sure Gail has written extensively about that. Would really like to suggest to folks that in a lot of cases, if they communicated with their neighbor, they'd be a whole lot better off. You know, if you plan to legally engage in fireworks in Washington courthouse and you've got a neighbor next door, why don't you go over and talk to them and tell them what you plan on doing? Invite them over so that everybody has a pleasant Fourth of July where they're not particularly scared or worried about anything. A little bit of communication between individuals goes a long way. The fire department, that truck that we've added at the fire department, the guys have been working very dutifully with that. There's a lot of gaining familiarity with driving the truck because it's a little bit different than the others. And all the operation of it and then equipping it and so forth. And they have been oh, I think everybody that's ever been to that fire department has been all over that thing. But really would like to thank them for that and the dedication that they have shown towards that. It's summertime, which means calls at the police department tick up a little bit. Thieving is a fair weather activity. Now, it's warm enough now. That slows down a little bit, but you know, it's hot. You got somebody out there trying to grill chicken and it's ninety eight degrees, so they get a little short temper to your, you know, your domestic issues tick up a bit. Folks, the police department does an exceptionally good job in Washington courthouse. And we need to remember that it's a busy time of year for them. And we need to to give them a little bit room to do their job and a little bit of understanding that it can be a quiet, go from call to call to call. And that is the way that has always worked with the weather since I since the beginning of time. The only thing that is worse. Oh, Christmas or New Year's, if the weather gets really bad and they're all shut up in a house together, then then you get to see the spirit of Christmas within the family. And sometimes that isn't very pleasant. But that is the way that that has worked for some time. And I also have Brigetta Hyzy Soil and Water down on the list to talk about. Brigetta, we've worked with over the years quite successfully. She does an excellent job for the community. And she emailed today about that grant for the the tree grant about all doing some things at the the fair that's coming up because part of that is educational purposes, which I think is just a wonderful idea and we'll work with Brigetta to accomplish that. And really, you know, I can't say enough how over the years she's been an asset to us and it's worked incredibly well with folks like Gary Dean and it's just been a great person. Not on the list, but I wanted to bring up the general contractor for the hospital project has been the easiest general contractor for us to interact with that I've ever seen. Very cooperative, they're organized and it's just been very pleasant to deal with. And that's all I had to talk about tonight. Any questions?
I just wanted to say that back up on talking about the master gardeners, I just think they really do a good job. It's just it's and making all those flowers look fresh, you know, I'm sure you would think it'd get bad soil or bugs or something, but to me, the ones I've ever seen always look really luscious.
Yeah, it's been, they do all the work. But over the years, it's been fun to, oh, interact with Donnie and, you know, why don't we try that that soil moist stuff and see how well that works and that. Honestly, if you use that at home with like a plant you're taking care of, it doesn't make hills beans a difference. But where it makes a tremendous difference in what we're doing out there is it holds enough moisture in that soil long enough that just makes it easier to to deal with that. And then the simplest thing that made it a whole lot easier too is that the pot simply got bigger. And if you think about what we originally started out with and more soil in it, just easier to just take care of in those conditions. Because in a lot of those, you know, they're on the sidewalk and they they bacon that sun all day. So you gotta have some surprisingly tough stuff. And one thing that surprised me is how well those canons do in that type of situation.
How often do they water in this kind of way?
Twice a day. Twice a week, I'm sorry.
Twice a week. Okay.
Street waters once and then the volunteers, the master gardeners. So that's why we played around with that soil composition a lot over the years.
It holds the moisture, you say?
Holds moisture in between the the waterings and then some things that are supposed to work in those conditions, they've experimented with that don't. And others have been a little bit surprised that get along quite happily.
I think we should give them some kind of recognition.
It would be nice because some folks have been with us since the beginning, like Dawn and Sarah. But the membership has changed a little bit in the master gardeners group, so it was mentioned a resolution of appreciation and and, you know, recognizing what they do for us because that when we say watering flowers, that's about a five hour deal. You got enough of those pots out there now to do that. That's about a five hour trip. It's not, we, two or three pots, you just dump a little bit of water on it. It's it's five hours worth of work.
What's that? In Satan, you own your church, mean that, and that's not.
Oh, I think you know what that is. The Miami of Ohio. The only Miami that there ever was. Not that thing in Florida.
It's not that other.
No, 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 no.
Mr. Sockman, we know you're limited in what you can report on, but do you want to say anything?
I would talk about the industry that we've got access to, something period helps the way we begin doing some of the financial stuff that we need to get a college one. Finish up papers and get that closed out, get it reconciled and then start moving into into June and hopefully we can get it closed out before I I'm going to guess somewhere maybe the first or second week, July is more realistic. But we're moving along. I mean, it's, you know, we've got a lot of progress just between when we came up on Monday to where we are today with pensions and pay and things like that. So pretty happy with the pace of getting progress. It'll take some time, but we'll get there.
Did you say you can give the employees a check now?
Well, we could do direct deposits now.
Do direct deposits. Yes, that's even better. Okay.
Yes.
So we moved from cash to direct deposit.
Direct deposit is and we we did it that so we can close out. So we did it actually today instead of Friday, but we did that so that was the last pay in May. So that begins, that's one of the things, plus the pensions paid in May. And now, once we get everything else, team can close May out and then we can move on and start working on June.
Good.
Yeah, so but we will get those. So from going forward, we'll get back to the direct deposits.
Good, good.
Mr. Pitstick, do you have anything?
I have no, no word, Mr. Chairman.
How many yards have you voted for this?
I don't have a clue.
A lot.
A lot.
Okay, we had no local residents sign up to speak, so we'll move to legislation. First is legislation previously introduced in ordinance number fourteen, twenty twenty five, second reading.
I'll move we put ordinance fourteen, twenty twenty five on second reading.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number fourteen dash two thousand and twenty five, an ordinance authorizing the city administration to seek reimbursement for contractors and developers for plan review costs incurred through third party engineering firms.
The rest are new legislation, starting with resolution number R twenty seven, twenty twenty five, first reading.
I move we place resolution number R twenty seven, twenty twenty five on first read.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to thank thank Mark for working this thing up or Joe or whoever did it.
We worked on it together.
Oh, we.
It was.
Usually do this stuff together.
It was, I think you made your point.
Have you heard back from him or anything?
Well, we don't send it to him until you're done.
Till you're done. Okay, we get another reading.
In case you change your mind.
Anything else? Roll call, Kevin.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty seven dash two thousand and twenty five, a resolution memorializing the history and structure of the Ohio Public Utilities Commission and requesting that P U C O cease requiring local gas utilities to disconnect service when no gas is used or delivered for a period of one year.
Resolution number R twenty eight, twenty twenty five, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R twenty eight, twenty twenty five on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty eight dash two thousand and twenty five, a resolution approving the contract with the Fraternal Fraternal International Association of Firefighters, firefighters, yes, local six ninety nine. I don't even know why that was hard.
I'm always glad when we pass those because they're thick. Oh, my gosh. Anyway, Mr. Chrisman, what do you have to finish us up this evening?
I'll just thank everybody that came this evening and we get a lot of support from the citizens as we try to support them, so kind of hand in hand. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Hawk.
I I think it's good when we recognize people for good things they do in town. And I think one thing, and this isn't original with me, but I've been, it's been mentioned before that maybe we ought to look at certain houses in town and the way they're decorated and the way they're kept clean and neat. I can think of two right now. The roots at the end of North Street where it crosses Elm Street. They keep that house. It's not a real expensive house, but it's always neat. And the house that the Asian, Harry Asian used to live in. They've been remodeling that and they have done a really good job. It looks like it's, I don't know if they tried to historically go back, you know, and make it original or what, but it it looks really good and I I commend them for doing that.
Very good.
Ted, a lot of that exterior work, it's been old Mr. Frederick, the local painter, general house fixer. He's done a lot. It's been exceptionally good work.
And the the school teacher that has the flowers on the building there.
It's his son. It's good.
Yeah, whoever it is, it looks, probably looks good, so.
Mrs. Call.
I just wanted to send out a save the date for August twenty third. The Carnegie Library of Washington courthouse does an annual event called Bog Girl Summer and they do different events through the day. But they always pick a charity within the community to donate the funds to and they've chosen the inclusive playground as their their designated this year, which is super cool. And it's always a fun event. I'm always there. Shannon Jacobs, who used to own Indigo Roots, is always there doing some kind of meditation. Last year we had worm composting and flower crowns and natural healing cells, so all kinds of cool stuff. But I just appreciate very much that Sarah Frump and the group at the library always pick something within the community to support, so. All I've got, yeah.
Schultz.
Well, yeah, I appreciate the the flowers and things around town too, and that is a good, good thing there at the library, so. And the other thing, I was in McDonald's the other day, talking to a bunch of guys and the issue about parking in downtown Washington courthouse came up again. But, you know, that's an age old problem. I, we all hear these problems forever and the parking in uptowns and the uptowns all over the United States, it is a problem. Whether you think we have a problem in uptown Washington or you don't think we have a problem. I've seen every solution in the book to correct it. From tearing down buildings and putting a parking lot behind the buildings. I've seen that down in cities. I've seen them tear down buildings and put up a parking garage in downtown. And I'm telling you, none of them ever really, really works. People still, I'll give you an example. Downtown Sandusky, Ohio, right downtown next to the bay. Forty years ago, I was on a committee in that town and we discussed putting in a parking garage. Well, most of us voted against it, but they finally did it. And today, that parking garage in downtown Sandusky, Ohio, because it's right there with you, you got the Cedar Point cause or the Cedar Point Ferry and everything, the one that goes up Put in Bay, all that, right downtown there. A lot of people downtown. Still, today, that parking garage is only a fourth to a half full at any time. They still have a parking problem, people parking on the streets. So here's the other problem you run into. Let's say you take, tear down two or three buildings and you put a parking lot right in the center of town. All right, first of all, you tore down some buildings. You put the parking lot there and you got all the cars off the street. And somebody drives through town and there's no cars downtown anymore. They would say, wow, what's wrong with this town? Nobody's here anymore. It's dead. So cars parked downtown creates business. It looks busy and it makes for business. So you can't and you don't want to get rid of all the downtown. There's always going to be an issue. There's no way around it. It's always going to be there. So there's other solutions and one big one, I'll give you one idea that came up many years ago in a seminar we were doing somewhere around the United States. Here's the problem. If you own a business in uptown or you work for a business in an uptown at any time during the day, you can look out your window and you can see your car or your employees' cars and they're not sitting in a parking lot across the street or next to your business, you could be part of the problem. So that's something to think about. You know, you could clear out parking downtown tomorrow morning, twenty five, thirty spots. I could clear up real quick. But it's not going to be popular and it never is. So but that is the thing. I like to see that the there is some issues we could work on, which Joe, I gave you, someone called you today with with some lady called me this morning and I had her call you. But you worked out the situation, no problem. So but it's, that is the problem. It's always going to be that way. And it started back, I'll tell you a quick little, started with Stony Wheeler. You know who Stony Wheeler was? He was the guy that chipped out the first rock in the Stone Age and rolled it down the hill. But anyway, that is a problem in downtown, in any downtown. It's always going to be there. Jack Hope in downtown Hillsborough showed me one time a newspaper from nineteen twenty seven and the front article on it, the parking problem in downtown Hillsborough in nineteen twenty seven. So it's always been there. It always will be there. But it's not too bad for business if you have, if you did away with all the cars, it's going to look dead. You have to have a certain amount of cars downtown. That's just the way it is. But at least we got the flowers. It looked great. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Blair.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This heat crisis that we have now, or remember last year when we had the same thing come up. But it really has concerned me and so I just wrote a paragraph here. I'll just share it with counsel. I just want you to hear my heart here. This heat crisis brings to mind the fact that there needs to be a coordinated community effort to alleviate the seriousness of those less fortunate folk who aren't able to afford the comforts many of us enjoy. Namely, a place.
namely a place of relief from the heat. From what I could ascertain from the information I could glean, the Carnegie Library and the community action during the day offer some relief, and in the evening and late afternoon, All Saints Church opened their arms to the community. Also, the McNair's Men's Ministry will be open by notification. Now, there are multiple churches within the county who have activity centers that could provide needed relief if they chose. And the city, I feel like, could contribute by making certain that the open facilities have the necessary resources such as water and snacks. I would like to propose the city or council appoint someone to assist the various organizations to meet this imperative need and ensure we supply the necessary items whenever the need arises. So I'm curious as to what process does council need to make this happen? Whether we will fund the necessary items that's needed to keep these places going in times of need? Is that something we have to vote on, or is that, how, how does that work?
Well, you would talk about it in committee, and you probably ought to think about, Jimmy, you've done a very good job of going through, uh, some of the, the resources that are there. Now, I don't know, has budgets have changed a little bit? Community action, there was, if people had a, could demonstrate a financial need, they would purchase for them a window air conditioner. I know that they had to change it so that after they did that, uh, you couldn't the next year turn around and apply again, cause they ran into the problem of, they'd buy a window air conditioner for somebody went hot, and then when one hot, they'd sell the window air conditioner and then come back again the next year when it got hot again. Uh, but, you know, if you talk about it, why don't you just have us, put us on the Service and Safety Committee list, and we'll talk about it and think about what you wanna do.
Anything else, Mr. Blair?
No, I just wasn't cur, are you sure what committee it would really fall under?
In the, the past, uh, oh, you might wanna ask Mrs. Havens to come to that from, from EMA. Uh, when they have done the cooling center thing before, uh, it's enormously, underwhelmingly attended.
And where was that at?
They've done it in a couple of different locations in the, they, they tried it for a couple of years, been several years ago now, Jim, and it just never, never worked. But we can have Melissa come and EMA and talk to you about that.
Yeah, I think if we did something, and part of the problem is getting the word out to everybody, because not everybody has Facebook, not everybody gets on the city website. I mean, if something comes together and we, we push it, put it in the newspaper, Gail could put a nice article in the paper instead of, you know, just tucking it away under an ordinance or a resolution. I think the word of mouth will get out and, uh, it, okay, but anyway, you, you know where, where I'm going, where my heart is, that I really feel like a lot of these people, you know, there are a lot out there that probably aren't aware of what you just mentioned about can get an air conditioner. So see, that word needs to get out.
Yeah, I, I know that community action, I know that they were still doing that two years ago.
I think they still do. We've had families, you said, FCSC, Family and Children First Council also will, I mean, they purchase a variety of things, but air conditioners for families, especially with children who have different developmental needs and breathing might be difficult, um, they will.
Who's in charge of that?
Of FCSC, it's a conglomeration of all of the school districts, the county board of, nobody's per se in charge.
I mean, who would I contact if I wanna talk to them about what we're doing?
Sharon Gibbs is generally the most active member, she's, um, she's helped me grow director, and she's in the building at the Health Department.
At the Health Department, okay, thank you.
Yeah, she's wonderful.
Okay.
And Jim, you kinda put that on me on the service and safety, if somebody did.
I did, yeah.
Maybe where Mr. Schultz gets those benches put, we could put mist, misters by the benches. I haven't thought this through, but that, just off the top of my head, did water misters? You just go sit on a bench and...
Get wet.
I, I'm halfway serious.
Do you wanna, are you serious?
Yeah.
Are you really?
You get the...
Where would you hook them up to?
To, to businessman that had, just hook a hose up and...
Run a hose out the door. Oh! Just sprays people down while they're sitting on their bench, that's gonna sound like it would...
And you don't have...
I think that'd go over real bad.
Water cannon out there, but you just... All right.
Hit the gavel, we, oh no, we got Mr. Johnson over here again.
Okay, Mr. Johnson.
I guess I won't mention how Ted's ultimate scheme is to have fluoride in that water.
While they're sitting there getting soaked, they can brush their teeth.
Comrade Hawk would like that.
Jim, I wasn't trying to ruin your idea, I just...
Oh, it didn't faze it. It didn't faze it. That's okay, Ted, that's okay.
I guess all I have, I, I was going to really not say much, but it's hot outside, so we might as well enjoy this air conditioning a little longer. Yeah, I, I, I like a lot of the ideas, I, I'm really happy with where this council is, uh, you know, putting their thoughts. I think more and more we're forward-looking and forward-thinking, and I like that. I'm hearing a lot about, we've got, you know, whether, whether you think that our infrastructure in Washington courthouse, whether you think it's a pool or a parking garage or whatever, I mean, there's a lot of other infrastructure projects that we up here also are aware of and thinking about, like a reservoir, and I think also, it's mentioned that some, somewhere along the lines are, uh, you know, water plant in order to accommodate the water that we'll probably need in the future, that will have to be, uh, addressed. There's just a lot of these infrastructure needs of the city. And so, thinking of that, I would just point out how detrimental it would be if we lost a good chunk of our revenue that we're trying to use to do these good things, to make sure that the people of Washington courthouse have nice things, cause we're looking at a tax situation where if we lose a million dollars every single year, we're not trying to increase it, and I think honestly, like, kudos to us. We might be one of the only entities that hasn't been increasing your taxes recently. We just want the, the simple ask of saying, hey, keep it the same level so that we can do these great things. Whether you think it's the infrastructure need, like I said, is, is a reservoir first, or a pool first, or however you wanna do it, maybe a mister first. You know, I, I, I think that no matter what it is, we're gonna need that income to put the city in a good place and not fall further behind, so I'll just throw that out there to close.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm on the Community Action Board, and the Community Action has always done things to help people who need things like air conditioners. Um, as Joe pointed out, sometimes people misuse things, and that's unfortunate. Uh, and Community Action is actually quite worried about all the cuts that are being made from the federal level, so, um, I'm not sure how many programs they're gonna be able to continue. Uh, I had the good fortune, the other last week, I guess it was, to go to a library board meeting. Bill Harris, who has been on the library board and chaired, actually, they call him president on that board. Um, he's been president of the library board for several years. And he and his wife are moving, um, and so he is leaving the library board, but they had a little thing for him. And, um, I got a chance to talk to the board a little bit. And by the way, Sarah has the side of the library, she would love to have some, uh, murals painted on it. There are some nice blank spaces. By the way, I hear she's very talented artistically too. But she, when, they were talking about how much they liked the mural downtown, and I said, yeah, we're, been thinking about some other mural locations, and she said, I got one for you, right outside here. Um, so anyway, and you could do some neat things at the library with murals, kids reading and playing, you know, and all that. So I said, well, I'll mention that, I think that would be a good place to do that, and it's right there on the corner. Um, anyway, I really appreciated what Mr. Harris did, I'm on the library board, and I was glad I got to be there and telling how much I thought, what a good job I thought he did. And that board does a great job, and Sarah does a great job, and, um, it's, they were mentioning at the last Community Action meeting that one of the main places at Community Action, they have the service of people can get rides to, you know, medical appointments and grocery or wherever. And they said one of the main places that people wanna go is to the library. And I thought, in this day and age, that's pretty neat, that people still want to go to the library. So, anyway, with that, does somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, Kelly.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes, we are adjourned.